Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Beaufort County Council Caucus meeting to order. Will you rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Since this is a hybrid meeting, we do have members in council and we do have members online. The three members online are council members Dawson, Flueheling, and McKellen. All other council members are here, therefore we do constitute a forum to conduct business. I would ask a member of council to offer the motion to approve the caucus agenda.
But you didn't have an invocation yet, did you?
No, the invocation is for the council meeting.
Oh, sorry.
Who made the motion?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Logan has made the motion. May I have a second, please?
A second.
And I saw, I heard Mr. Glover. So duly motioned and second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion and no objections, the agenda meeting, the agenda will be approved for this meeting. Next item is the agenda review. It's going to be the review of the council agenda that will begin at 6:00 P.M. It should be noted that item number 16 on the consent agenda had a typo. That figure should be $1,500,000, not 500,000. So please note that correction. All other items on the agenda seem to be in order. Is there any comments, questions, concerns about either the consent agenda on the council agenda or the items that we're going to discuss?
10 and 11 on the consent agenda.
Items 10 and 11?
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to remove those and discuss those by themselves. Any other suggestions from council members in council or online? Seeing nothing, is there anything to be brought up by council members before we have a motion to go into executive session? Seeing none, therefore I would like a motion for council to go into executive session. Mr. Summerdale makes the motion. A second, please. Ms. Howard makes the second. We are going to go into executive session pursuant to South Carolina Code's Section 30-47A2 to discuss proposed sale of property and attorney-client privilege. We may have items to be acted upon after that closed session. Okay, there is no further need for discussion, so we will begin the executive session. And it should not take that long. We'll come out after that and adjourn the caucus meeting.
[326.30]
Come out of executive session, there will be no action taken on the discussion that was done in executive session. So we are going to adjourn the caucus meeting. It is six o'clock, it takes a few minutes for us to set up for the meeting so at five after six we'll begin the council meeting. Thank you.
(pause) (inaudible) 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 (pause)
Come out of executive session, there will be no action taken on the discussion that was done in executive session. So we are going to adjourn the caucus meeting. It is six o'clock. It takes a few minutes for us to set up for the meeting, so at five after six, we'll begin the council meeting. Thank you. Everyone, this is the county council meeting of Monday, August 23rd. It is 6:05 PM. I will have called this to order. This is a hybrid meeting, which means we do have people in person, as you can see on the dais, but also we have three council members who are online. That would be Councilman Dawson, Flouellen, and McKellen. So we do constitute a quorum to conduct the business. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation conducted by Mr. Rodman? Go ahead, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would bow with me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we're in the middle of a very contentious time in the transition in Afghanistan. There's many, many people, Americans and others, that are in harm's way. We ask for your intervention and for wisdom of our leaders on how to best work through this. Lord, we're also seeing the reemergence of the virus, and we ask that people would be conscious of this, and we ask for comfort for those people that are going through a recovery, and comfort for those that are and may lose family members. And Lord, as we turn to our business at hand, we just trust that our dealings will be sensitive to the needs of all and that would be pleasing to you, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. As we reviewed at the caucus agenda, caucus meeting, yes, Mr. Dawson?
Okay. I lost the audio there for a moment. Where are we?
We're at the approval of the agenda, and we're going to be amending that. Do you wish to make an amendment?
Yes, sir. So I'd like to know...I don't want to amend it. Joe, I think I would just like to pull it. There's oversight on my behalf during our caucus to pull it then. I need to recuse myself from item four, so if we just pull it, and then we can vote on it separately, and then I'll recuse myself during the vote, if you will.
Not a problem. We can do that. Okay. As I said, we're going to amend the agenda, so I would ask a member of council to approve, to amend the agenda as follows. The removal from the consent agenda for items number four, 10, and 11, and because of the typo, item number 16 should read SC 170 Improvement Project, $1,500,000. So...
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Can you say that again?
I said, I'll move.
That was moved by Mr. Dawson. As second, please. Ms. Howard makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded for the consideration of amending the agenda. Is there any further discussion? I see no objections to approving the amended, moving for amending the agenda. Since there are no objections, the agenda is now amended, and I would look for someone to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
No move.
Okay. I saw, Mr. Rodman, you made the motion?
No, I didn't, but I'm happy to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Somerville made the motion, and Mr. Glover made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? The agenda will be approved as amended without objection, and I see no objections. Therefore, the agenda is approved as amended. We are now at the administrator's report. Mr. Greenway, what say you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, council members and members of the citizens of Beaufort County who are here with us this evening. I have three employees I would like to highlight tonight. I'm going to start off with the, an employee from Alcohol and Drug Abuse Department. Name is Shamika Brown. She is a counselor. She's been with us a little over 10 years, three with DSCN, and it says 10 with the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Department, but if you do that math, it adds up to about 13. So I'm really, I'm a planner, so I probably should not try to add, but between 10 and 13 years she's been with the county, so she's had quite a career here. So she is a substance misuse counselor. She was nominated by a peer and ultimately selected for the Employee Spotlight, and the nomination read as follows: "I dominate Ms. Brown for being an early adopter of peer support and for her professionalism. She routinely considers peer support services as an enhancement to treatment for her patients, especially the ones who are struggling or have issues committing to treatment. I think that's a great thing. Ms. Brown seems to genuinely care about the well-being of her patients, as evidenced by her willingness to consider BCADAD services beyond those she provides. She communicates with other staff in a respectful, timely, and effective manner, and has personally helped to make me feel like a valued member of the team." And again, that is all the quote from the nomination. Something unique about her is that she likes adventure. In August, she went on a six-mile rafting trip on the Georgia River without knowing what was in front of her, and we're all pleased to report that she did survive. So congratulations to her and for getting out there and doing a little whitewater rafting. When I was much younger, I did that quite regularly. So very proud of her for climbing in that boat. Our second employee is an employee from Disability and Special Needs, Wanda Dampser-Maze. She is the Deputy Director, Quality Assurance Coordinator, and Residential Director. She has been with DSM for 14 years, under the supervision of the Executive Director, Mr. Love. Her duties include administrative and managerial responsibilities, quality development and assessments, evaluation of consumer service needs. She does quality assurance, risk management, staff recruitment, training and development, development and programming. She assists with the preparation, management, and monitoring of the budget. She does satisfaction surveys, coordinates those, and evaluates those for service to recipients and family members. And she pursues educational opportunities to maintain competency and remain abreast of industry standards and best practices. And finally, she helps with the development and execution of the Disaster Preparedness Plan, which is a big thing here in Beaufort County and what we're working through currently to make sure we're ready for a natural disaster. Wanda has worked in the human services field for over 25 years in various states, including California, Virginia, Texas, North Carolina, and has traveled with her husband, who is a career Marine. After supporting three daughters to obtain college degrees, she is in the final stages of completing her master's degree in counseling and preparing to obtain licensure for several states. Assessing services for individuals with intellectual disabilities has been challenging. Most providers struggle with the communication aspect of therapy with individuals with intellectual challenges. She is hopeful that a combination of experience as a speech pathologist, coupled with the counseling training, will assist with the developing services for individuals, will assist with developing services for individuals that have coexisting challenges of intellectual disabilities and mental health challenges. I'm very proud to have her on our team. She sounds like a very responsible individual who is self-motivated, and I think we ought to give her and the previous employee a round of applause at this time. And then finally, this evening, with our employee spotlights, and I may butcher this name, I do apologize, Candido Montanez, who works with our Parks and Recreation Department as a maintenance tech. Been with us 23 and a half years. Monty is a maintenance tech that handles cutting grass and the day-to-day maintenance. His specialty is ball fields. He lines fields for soccer, flight football, lacrosse, softball, and baseball. And I want to say something, if I may here. I'm going to add a little bit. I probably shouldn't because when I go off script, I get myself in trouble. But I think you all, as council members and citizens of our county, ought to realize that the least, the least visible folks in our organization are some of the most important people in our organization because ultimately, they're the most visible people. People get to see me because I'm on camera, but I don't really make Beaufort County look the way Beaufort County looks. And it's these folks here that have served our county for many, many years behind the scenes in these least visible roles that provide the biggest impact to the county and to the workforce. And I'm very thankful that they are willing to serve with us as long as they do in the roles that they perform. It's very vital to the health and livability of our community. So thank you, Monty. Monty is a go-to employee for ball fields on the Beaufort side. He takes pride in the preparation of ball fields. Anytime we have a tournament, Monty is the first one to step up and ask to be scheduled every day for the tournament. He wants to make sure the fields are right and perfect for any visitors we have in town, which kind of goes along with what I just said. They're behind the scenes, but they're really visible with their work, and it's greatly appreciated. I'm going to now turn it over to two Assistant County Administrators because I want them to hear from you. As, I mean, I want you all to hear from them from time to time. Phil Foot's going to come up and talk about the food service contract and some contract renewals that you will have on the consent agenda. And then after that, it will be Audra Antanasi for doing the Community Services Grant Program update, and then I'll come back for two other items.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening, Councilors and Councilmen. I was asked to come up here and briefly go over some of the contracts and also the renewal contracts that we have for our division. So I just wanted to go over those real briefly with you. First one that we have up there is our food service contract for the detention center. The contract that we had in place had gone through its cycle. It had made it through the five years, and it got put back out for bid. And so that's the reason why it's up as a new contract. We've had three companies that placed a proposal in. They put together a team from the detention center to go to the proposals, and they've selected Trinity Group as the new food service contractor for the detention center. So it'll have a one-year contract with four renewals also. The contract is an approximate amount at $320,000 for the year annually, and we typically run about, anywhere from about $240,000 meals in a year to somewhere around $260,000, $270,000. This all depends on the amount of people that get arrested in Beaufort County and we have to deal with. So as you see in the package, what you'll see is some pricing in there. So we don't really pay just that $320,000. That's just an approximate amount. What we actually pay for is the meals that we actually serve and get prepared for each one of the inmates that are inside the detention center. Also on there, a lot of people ask me, well, why don't you put a cold meal in there? Or why don't you do two colds and a hot to make it cheaper? If you look at the price scale in there, what you're going to see is that it's cheaper to do three hot meals than it is to do cold meals. And the reason being is that it's easier for food service like Trinity, or there's a Sedexo out there, and a lot of these other big companies that do food service, it's easier for them to cook larger meals that are hot meals than it is to try to prepare sandwich meat and trying to put sandwiches together. So that's the reason why we serve three hot meals. Food service contract also brings other things with it, which is menus. They have a dietitian on staff that goes through to make sure that the meals are proper as far as for the calories because we do hold juveniles, so we have to have the proper calories for juveniles, as we do have to have proper calories for the adult population that we have inside the detention center. So that's one of the other things that comes along with that. The other thing is that there's, in those menus, we don't have any pork inside those menus to satisfy any Muslims that we may have inside the facility. So we don't serve any pork. Everything's all turkey-based. Can't tell the difference. Trust me, I know. And we also have to have menus that are already done up by the dietitian to cover any type of medical menus that we may have, low sodium, high sodium, whatever it is. They've got all the menus already prepared for us, and that's what the dietitian does along with food service workers that we have inside the facility preparing the meals. So that's what our food service contract is. And just for Councilman McKellen, just so that you know, sir, the company is based out of Florida. Trinity Group is, like the rest of these, large food service contractors. They're from other places. Trinity, the reason why I couldn't answer it last time is because Trinity has two separate groups. They have a commissary group and a food service group. I knew where the commissary group was, but the food service was down in Florida. And also, just for your own information, the vice president, the regional vice president for this company also lives in Beaufort County, the Trinity Group, and the regional manager lives in Anderson, and they have another regional manager that lives in York County. So there is people that are actually residents that are living in South Carolina that are part of this contract. So if you have any questions, I'm open for questions.
Any questions? Any questions from those of you online?
This one, if I could.
Mr. Glover?
Mr. Foot. That's okay. I'll ask this in private.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll try to give you an answer, probably.
All right. Then thank you, Mr. Foot.
All right. Next one's up. Our contracts are up for renewal. I will go through three of the ones that are up that are on the Public Safety Division, and then one of them I'll leave off for Audra to talk to, which is the Owl Transportation, and that'll be 3C. So 1A renewal will be Hilton Head Humane Association for Animal Services. Cost of the contract is $550,000, $505,000 for the services out there at the animal services. Just briefly, most of y'all know we go through the animal services quite often, but they provide adoption services out there. They provide the spay and neuter clinic out there for us, and they also provide veterinary service and taking care of the kennels out there. And they're a great partner, and we're really lucky in Beaufort County to have them as a partner, and they are a 501-3C. Next one up is Medico. Medico is our medical contract at the detention center. They supply the RN and LPNs along with a physician and also a dentist. And so this contract is on, here we have $1,531,301.46, which was our last year's cost. This year's cost will be $1,550,000. They take care of all the inmates inside the facility as far as making sure the medications are correct, providing a physician on staff so that they're able to do what we call doctor's call. If you have a sick halt chit put in that you don't feel well, then you'll be able to be seen by an RN and then by the physician. And also, after a certain amount of period of time of being in there, they also get a dental work through just to make sure everything is okay inside there as far as their dental work goes. So it's a pretty comprehensive contract. There's, we go through a lot of inmates in a year, and you can only imagine the amount of people that come in with problems already before they get into our facility. And so we have to have medical staff that is on staff 24/7, 365. So that's what we have right now in place, and that's the reason why the contract's very, very large. Now, when we lost our other contract, and when I say we lost the other contract, the other medical contractor that pulled out almost two years now gave us notice and just said that they were leaving. They could no longer do it. We could not find a medical contractor to come onboard, and when we reached out, we found Medico. They were the only ones that were willing to come in and actually take over the contract. And then we did that on an emergency contract. Then we put it out for an RFP, and they were the only ones that put a proposal in for medical. So it's tough out there to find companies that really want to get into this part of it because the medical is usually, if anything, is where you're going to get your liability at. at. And that's why you have to be very cautious about what you do when you're dealing with the medical inside the Detention Center.
Any questions? Does that include cost of medications?
Yes, ma'am. It's all inclusive. Any questions? All right. The last one I need to speak about is Clark Mosquito Control. They're the ones that provide our adulticide. This is our aerial adulticide. We buy them in these large tubs, and the chemicals come in, and they go out to the airport on Ladies Island. And our OB-10 is the one that flies by that a lot of people get to see. And they spray for the adult mosquitoes. As you well know, our mosquito control does it in different phases. We do the little cricketts in the stormwater to catch our stormwater mosquitoes that are breeding. And so we go through every one of the 32,500 and plus stormwater drains and drop the little cricketts in there to stop them from breeding. The ones that are in the stormwater drains are the ones that we're most worried about because those are the ones that breed that have West Nile. So that's where we start at. You'll see our helicopter out, and our helicopter does the larva sighting, is which after once they become a certain age in their larvae stage, then the helicopter puts pellets out to kill the larvae, and then the airplane, our OB-10, flies in and kills the adult mosquitoes once they bred. So it's sort of a three-pronged phase that we go through. This contract is, this year is going to be $218,427, and that'll be a renewal with Clark Mosquito Control out of Illinois. Any questions?
Any questions?
Hopefully I covered everything.
No questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Foot.
I'll turn it over to Audra, and she can finish up with that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Council. This is officially my first time in front of the podium since I've taken my new role. The contract, the contract renewal that I have is for the Community Services Division for Department of Special Needs Department, and it is a contract renewal for Owl Transportation. And this transportation is for, to commute individuals to day services, consumers. The amount of the contract is $283,140. I only have one contract for this evening.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Sorry, Joe, I wanted to just confirm the amount of that contract.
The amount of the contract? Audra, would you say that number again, please?
$283,140.
Did you hear that, Larry?
No, I didn't. Okay, thank you.
An update in regards to the Community Services Grant Program. The deadline for the applications was July 30th. Thirty-eight applications were received, some of which were new organizations, and the applications will be reviewed by panel this week. First part of the distributions of the funds will take place late November, early December, and that is the amount of $398,000.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Greenway.
Just one additional item very quickly. I will email you all a document tomorrow that looks like this. This is the vacant boards and commissions matrix. If you will pay attention to that, we have several vacancies, 21 vacancies across all of our boards and commissions that range from countywide positions to specific district positions that are vacant. So if you all pay attention to that, if you have any vacancies in your district or countywide and know people that might be a good fit for this, it would be great for you all to work with Tiffany and Ms. Brock's office to get those positions filled. Also, for anyone watching online or in the audience here this evening, that vacancy list is on our website. If you have any interest in serving on any board or commission, please look that up, reach out to me, or reach out to the Clerk Counsel's Office, and we will help you find a spot on one of our many very important boards and commissions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That was my report.
I have a question. My audio's not working properly. Did you cover the striker monitors and maintenance and the election systems that we were getting renewal contracts for?
We did not. You can do that under liaison and committee reports if you wish.
I didn't, I didn't hear what he said.
He was asking about some other items that were on the consent agenda. Is that not correct, Larry, if I understood what you said?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I cared about. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if you wish to make comments about those under the consent agenda when it comes time for the liaison reports, or Mr. Foot is coming back, maybe he could mention them.
I believe those are two contracts that were approved at committee level at Community Services, Councilman McKellen.
Right.
They were already approved, they were already approved at your level.
Right.
They don't have to come to council.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. We are now at the Committee of Citizens' comments. We do have six people in the audience who wish to address County Council about issues. We did receive three online comments that have been distributed to each of the County Council members. Therefore, I do not need to read those particular comments. So as I call your name, please note that you will have three minutes to address County Council. When you do come, understand that we do want to hear from you. Time is of the essence, because we do have six people that want to address County Council. So the first person is Tony Crisitello. Mr. Crisitello, please come forward. I think you've done this once or twice before, County Council?
I have. Mr. Chairman, members of the County Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to appear before you this evening. Tonight, I'm speaking to you as an advocate of the Planning Commission. I am a strong supporter of the Planning Commission. I have great respect and sympathy for the Planning Commission. And as a result of that, I presented to the Planning Commission a recommendation for the development of an environmental education center at Binden Plantation. As you may know, members of the County Council, the County Council participated in a conservation easement in 2012, and it says clearly in the conservation easement, "It is our intent to build an environmental education senator, center for the citizens of the Low Country." Now, since I have retired, my goal, among other things, has been to be involved in something good and leave something good behind. I cannot think of a more worthy a thing to do than to do something associated with an environmental education center. The idea is now 11 years in the making, and it's time for the county government to do something about that. In the process of trying to advance that cause, I appeared before the Planning Commission in June, and they recommended to the County Council that an environmental education center be enacted. The powers, duties, and responsibilities of the County Council and the Planning Commission are outlined in your Community Development Code, and they're also outlined in state law under the powers, duties, and responsibilities of local governments under 629-342. I could read to you those particular sections, but it's important to remember that all, all sections of the Community Development Code are equal dignity, meaning that each phase of that ordinance are equal value as the next. In the section dealing with the powers, duties of the County Planning Commission and the County Council, it says, they shall, meaning the Planning Commission, shall promptly recommend to the County Council the item being forwarded to them, to you, County Council, by the Planning Commission. And also, in that very same section of the Community Development Code, it says that the County Council shall, shall promptly redeem. Am I exceeding three minutes?
Yes, you have.
Boy, I'm having a lot of fun.
We get the gist.
But to long story make short, Mr. Chairman, prompt and shall is tonight. I would recommend to you that you can, by title only, advance the recommendation of the Planning Commission for an environmental education center at Binden Plantation, and as second reading, the Natural Resources Committee can be assembled and panelled to make a recommendation. You lose nothing, zero. It costs you not a dime. The comprehensive plan is a 10-year document, and you have 10 years to work on it. I would ask you to consider this. It is, it is indeed the responsibility of the County Council to make a decision, and I would ask that you do that promptly. Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Morris Campbell. Good evening, Mr. Campbell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Members of Council, Administrator. Thank you for this opportunity to come before Council. Because about a year ago, I think, we talked about the retirees and health benefits for the retirees, and I know that a year has been a long time for us to come back to talk to you about it, and of course, we are very, very, very happy with, we think, what progress has been made to address the health benefits, not only of just some of the retirees, but hopefully you all have addressed the health benefits that were taken from all of the retirees. Today, I noticed that on the agenda, there is, on the consent agenda, Item 4 is probably going to deal with that, and my purpose for coming today is basically to encourage you to be fair and to be the true, I guess, leaders that the County Council is as far as making sure that our employees, retired or not, are treated fairly across the board. Administrator Greenway presented his recognition of the gentleman who took care of the grounds and baseball fields, et cetera. Those are the people that really make the big difference, that really made the difference to the county, and a lot of the retirees that we are begging and pleading for are those same type of people that basically we felt got shaft when those health benefits were taken from them once they retired. So today, if Item 4 on the consent agenda that was pulled from the consent agenda is going to be voted upon, we plead that you do that on behalf of the retirees. A number of them are in the audience. In fact, I think I've got a friend of mine who's been retired from the system for a while, but who gave like 43 years of his life to the county, and he's only 50 years old now. So you can imagine being 50 and giving 43 to the county, at least that's what he said, Bud. But certainly, you know, that's the kind of dedication that our employees had doing, serving and serving the county, and we hope that you all will be very, very much fair in treating all of them that way. And I thank you again for your time. I thank you for your attention. I thank you for responding to us, and I thank you for, hopefully, doing something to remedy what we feel was a mistake in the first place.
Thank you.
Morris, you were talking about Arthur Cummings, weren't you?
Bud and Arthur, yes.
Next is Gerald Kramer. Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Councilmembers. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
My name's Gerald Kramer, and moved here. I want to give a little background on the, I thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening as well. My family moved here in 1962, so I'm pretty much a lifelong resident. I have lived in Georgia a period of time when I was with work and some family issues with health. But for the most of my life, I've lived here in South Carolina, Beaufort County. In 2003, I purchased a lot that I planned to build on. I had some delays because of finances and those other things going on, so I didn't get that accomplished until recently. I've got my plans together, went down to the courthouse and applied for the permit. I'm going to be my own contractor, and I got a fee of some $16,000 for the permit. So I did some investigating. I didn't pay it right then because I had sticker shock, actually. After I got the breakdown on it, and actually I ended up talking to Mr. Brian Fowling, who is my representative on the council during that time, it was about a week before I made some decisions to move forward and paid it under protest. But the permit fee was about $6,859. But there was an additional school impact fee that had went into place about 30 days before I went down in July 28th approximately to do my permit. The school impact fee was $9,535. So anyway, having said that, this was also, as you know, because you passed it, I think it was a seven to four vote. Mr. Fowling voted in opposition to it. He represents my area. But this fee was put in place for this, a school impact fee for the building construction, I'm assuming, of schools, south of the Broad River in unincorporated areas. So that leaves out Town of Hilton Head, that leaves out Town of Bluffton, that leaves out Pelmetta Bluff, which is Town of Bluffton. So all those folks are not paying the $9,535 addition that I had to pay. I just feel like this is an unfair burden for a few paying for many, and I just really request the council take second consideration on this, and that they would actually reverse their decision and come up and develop a more equal and fair, and I've heard that word mentioned, fair and equal, here tonight a few times from Mr. Campbell and others here, to come up with a more fair and equal funding for the schools south of the Broad River. Now, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next will be Joshua Staker. Justice.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening, Chairman and members of County Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I am representing over 1,900 Realtors in the region, but most importantly, I'm speaking on behalf of homeowners in Beaufort County. We are opposed to the proposed coastal resilience overlay zone standards ordinance before Council today, but let me be very clear. We are not opposed to the creation of a coastal resilience overlay zone. It is the disclosure contained in the ordinance that is problematic. We have listened to members of the Sea Level Rise Task Force as well as the Coastal Conservation League. They have made it clear to staff and others that the main purpose was to educate property owners about sea level rise. I am here today to suggest that we do that, but not by interfering with the business transaction, creating a liability for homeowners, and stigmatizing properties in the process. You may be advised that the creation of the Marine Corps Air Station Airport Overlay District set a precedence for the proposed disclosure, but it does not. They are apples and oranges, plain and simple. It's a fact that noise exists. It's a fact that noise exists already. Disclosures are for identifying the history and existing material facts about the property. The CRO Zone disclosure attempts to address possible future occurrences to the property. Educating a buyer of the potential of flooding should not be a liability for a seller. If the true purpose of this disclosure is to educate, then let's develop a plan to accomplish the goal of the disclosure that doesn't involve creating liability for the seller. Why not have the Coastal Conservation League, the Sea Level Rise Task Force, the county, and both Realtor associations work together to create a marketing piece to be distributed annually to homeowners that addresses sea level rise and flood insurance? We would put our resources behind that type of an educational campaign. As I've said before, the Realtors are not opposed to the creation of the CRO Zone. The disclosure is the problem. Let's work together to truly educate property owners in a way that does not burden them with liability.
Thank you. Next is Janet Gresham.
Good evening. I am Janet Gresham, and I am the CEO of the Beaufort Jasper County Realtors. And I'm here to speak against the disclosure requirement of the coastal resilience overlay zone ordinance. Staff has stated that this disclosure is like the AQ's disclosure, but you can't compare the two. The liability attached to the AQ's disclosure is based on a material present fact that properties lying within the AQ's zone will experience noise at various levels. But the liability attached to the CRO disclosure is based on the possibility of future flooding and sea level rise. State law requires sellers to sign and present a property disclosure to prospective buyers, and this disclosure creates liability for a seller based on the seller's own knowledge of existing material facts about the history and condition of the property. Liability and personal knowledge of existing property conditions is not the same as creating liability for a possible future event that's flooding, whether it's flooding, sea level rise, hurricanes, or other natural disasters. Buyers are responsible for conducting their own due diligence when buying property, and they're advised several times during the process and before signing a contract to seek the advice of experts to determine the elevation, flood zone, flood risk, and type of insurance to purchase. Insurance agents and/or surveyors are the experts with the knowledge base to properly advise buyers, not sellers. And sellers should not be charged with the responsibility of liability to certify such information. Our entire county is in a floodplain and subject to flooding and sea level rise, yet the CRO Zone targets properties least likely to flood or experience sea level rise. It appears that these property owners could be adversely affected, and as such, a future sale could be negatively impacted. After reading that the property will flood due to, quote, "increasingly intense storm events, king tides and sea level rise," close quote, a buyer may elect not to purchase the property, or any property in Beaufort County for that matter, since the entire county is subject to these same threats. We believe the mission of the county should be to educate all property owners of the possibility of flooding, sea level rise, and the availability of flood insurance, not just those in the CRO Zone, in unincorporated Beaufort County, which is the least likely areas to experience flooding and sea level rise. Wouldn't a better approach be to launch an annual or semi-annual educational marketing campaign countywide to include all flood zones and all property owners? The Realtor associations would be happy to support this and would assist in the marketing campaign. Thank you for your time and consideration of this. A very important issue facing property owners in Beaufort County.
Thank you. And our last person is Miriam Mitchell.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Council members, County Administrator. Thank you for allowing this group, the retirees, to come and address you and talk about this very important issue. My name is Miriam Mitchell. I'm from Seabrook, South Carolina, and I'm also a Beaufort County retiree. I thank you for allowing us to present these comments on the retiree healthcare benefits. In your discussions, please remember that this was a group of loyal employees who had no sick leave. If you were sick, you either came to work sick or you took valuable vacation time, which happened to be two weeks a year. Years of furloughs, no colas, they were underpaid with no progressions, and they were understaffed and had limited holidays. The irony is, they were also told many times that they were the most important assets the county had. And to address the County Administrator's comment, he recognizes the importance of people behind the scenes. I do appreciate that, and I appreciate your saying that. But what a disappointment the retirees had when they found out that their healthcare benefits were taken from them. Let me rephrase that. Wasn't just disappointment, it was absolute shock. There were no explanations why other retirees received considerations. So we ask that you fairly and equitably recognize these employee retirees. And I would like to have all the retirees that are here tonight stand so you can recognize them.
That will conclude the citizen comments. We're now at the liaison and committee reports. Members of council who have items on the consent agenda, who may want to report, I'll deal with those first, and then I will have some comments to make. So, beginning with the Public Facilities, I mean, I'm sorry, Community Services and Public Safety Committee. Mr. McCollum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The issues that were presented by Audra Antarache and Phil Foot dealt with the contracts renewal that were presented at the last Community Services, Public Safety meeting, and also the matter related to community service grants. At the last Community Service meeting, I made a statement that I thought was appropriate because the title of the committee was Community Services and Public Safety, and I'm going to make that report again this evening. Today, the FDA has lifted the emergency authorization for the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine, issuing full approval. For us, that's very good news. I also read today in paper that at least 554,000 people have tested positive for the virus, and about 9,000 have died in South Carolinas in March. The Department of Health and Environmental Control has reported 4,000 new cases and 25 coronavirus-related deaths on Monday. At least 1,942 people in the state were reported hospitalized with the virus as of August 20th, 497 patients in the ICU. As of Monday, 14.5% of COVID-19 tests reported positive. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention say 5% or lower means there's a low level of community spread. Just over 46% of South Carolinians were eligible to receive the vaccine or fully vaccinated. Nearly 55% have received at least one dose. Today, Beaufort County logged in seven new COVID-19 deaths, which are the highest case average since the pandemic began in 2020. My belief that vaccine is the best weapon against this virus. I urge anyone who is listening, as those who know, who are resisting vaccination, to reconsider for their own good and the collective good of public health. That ends my presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Finance Committee. Mr. Lawson.
Yes, we've got two items coming out of the Finance Committee. First is a reading of an ordinance for the fiscal year 21 carryover budget items. And then the second is number five, which is first reading of an ordinance to redirect expenditures of the General Obligations Bond Series 2020. And obviously, number four has been moved to an action item as the retirees. So again, our next meeting is going to be September 19th at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you. Natural Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several. Number six on the consent agenda is a text amendment to the CDC code addressing general parking standards so that parking can be more than 600 feet from the premises, which might make good sense in some situations. So that's what that one's about. Number seven is a zoning change from S1 industrial to C3. The adjacent property to the one in question is already C3, and this will allow some residential development on that property that the owner wants to do. That was approved unanimously at the Natural Resource Committee meeting. Moving on to item number eight is abandonment of an easement encumbering property. And this has been a long-term thing going on that has to do with a significant drainage system. And the staff has recommended abandoning the easement associated with a certain parcel once the condemnation actions are finalized for another parcel. So that will enable us to go ahead with the regional stormwater that is needed to be put in there. Number nine is a text amendment regarding fill standards. This was presented to the Natural Resource Committee. I want to make sure people understand that single-family residential development on existing lots are exempt from the fill requirements. It was approved by the Natural Resource Committee, and we're moving that forward. There's no financial impact. This will limit fills to three feet, and it was, this will help us in some of our development needs, keeping things limited on how much actual fill dirt can come in. Items number 10 and 11 have been pulled, so we'll move on to number 12. This is a contract approval which exceeded the amount that the Natural Resource Committee could approve for $149,350 for Phase 2 for planning services for the Okati River Park. And this will enable things to go forward for the park. And it's anticipated that construction may start as early as January 2022, assuming the roads and infrastructure for access to the county park have been completed by that time. Number 13 is a resolution between the county and for, this is changing public access Phase 2. We need to change what we're using. We were going to use $1 million for Pickney Point Preserve, but this amendment would allocate those funds to the Pine View Track and the Bailey Memorial Park, as those are the ones more urgent to do at this time. And we were in a litigation regarding access to Pickney Point, so this enables us to use that money to go forward with those other two pass of parks. And there's an appointment of Thomas Murray as a partial first term to Rural and Critical Order Preservation Board with an expiration date of 2023. I'd like to also mention that since our last meeting, I'm liaison to the TCL Board, and they have some good news. The dual enrollment is up. There are going to be over 400 students in high school that will also be able to work on their college degree. And TCL is also, that is in Beaufort County. They have also gotten a grant to work with Hampton and Jasper Counties on their dual enrollment programs. The other good news is the board approved to do improvements to where they do CDL training. As you all know, CDL licenses are needed throughout the country, and particularly in our areas everyone else. And so they're going to do improvements to the Hampton site so that they will be able to issue permits, CDL permits, at that site, which will also help with the shortage of bus drivers, because they'll be able to get their licenses there, too. And hopefully, there will be a concurrent program in the Hampton County schools to get the CDL while a student is in high school. They've made a few changes in their coursework. They've increased their program for police science so that more students can take some of those classes. And they are down just a little bit from 2020 in their full-time enrollment, but again, their dual enrollments are up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Public Facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple items. One, 15, on the consent agenda has to do with a $1.2 million authorization of accepting FAA money. This is actually housekeeping after the fact, but this has to do with, I think, the planning for the strengthening of the runway. It's 100% funded by the FAA, and we went ahead and signed that in the interest of time. The second item has to do with the improvements on 170. As was mentioned, it's really 1.5 million, not the 500,000. It was on the agenda, but we've talked several times about the 1.5, so that's nothing new to us. But the background on that is that that section of 170, from 278 up to 462, is probably the most dangerous section we have right now, not counting the work going on on 278. And there's been a lot of accidents. In fact, there was one there today as I was driving over for council. So I think once we learned about it, we stepped out as council approved the money to get on with the design, and that's underway. We're now looking at the construction piece. Best estimate is probably about $2.5 million. We would be putting up a $1.5 million out of impact fees, as recommended by staff. Jasper was still have to approve their piece, but their administration will be requesting a million from their council. And we're going to ask, both of us agreed, we'd ask Cardyville for half a million going forward. The other piece that will happen in parallel with this, SC DOT has a resurfacing in that area scheduled for the next fiscal year. And so they've agreed with our staff that we'd roll those together. And if we've incurred any cost prior to the next July, we would cover those, and they would reimburse us out of their budget going forward. But there'd be some good economies of scale. And I think the other more important piece is, I think this is an opportunity for Jasper and Beaufort to really sit down, roll up our sleeves, and look at what's happening on 170, and, you know, where do we want to go from here? And maybe there's some, looking out over the horizon a little bit, there may be some more design work that we want to get on with. So I think it's a good deal. Two other items from a committee standpoint, just to talk about. There was an article in the Packet today about the potential use of the old bridges as some kind of a, what they call, linear park. You may remember Representative Jeff Bradley brought that up some time ago, and Mr. Nguyen was quoted in the paper today as saying it's not totally out of the question. I think the issue for DOT on this is they're happy to give the bridges to anybody that would take them. As a practical matter, it's not something that, in their way of doing business, they would hang on to, so therefore, they have folded demolition into the planned project. It's about an $8 million bill, as I understand it. But since the door is a little bit ajar, I don't think it's something that the county would do on their own, but I think the biggest benefit would be for Hilton Head. But I think if Hilton Head was really interested in doing it, I think it's something that we would seriously consider being part of. So I think at Public Facilities, we need to think about that and see dialogue with the town and see if it's something that people want to look at. Just two other minor points to that. And I think DOT has basically said, you know, it doesn't make sense in the way they do business, but it doesn't mean that they wouldn't be happy to give the bridges to somebody. But, you know, perhaps a portion of the northbound section of the westbound section, you know, could be actually used for the bicycle trail rather than destroying that particular piece, and that would save building, you know, the bicycle trail along there. The other one that some folks have suggested is that perhaps the, one of the bridges could be retained, and that could be the connection from Jenkins to Pickney, and that would save having the on-off ramps in the middle of the high-speed section of the whole bridge section. So anyway, stay tuned on that one. And lastly, we'll be taking up probably at our next Public Facilities meeting, the terminal and the funding. We have the good problem that there's been a lot of growth, and so we need to take a look at what we think that means. And the FAA has put up 20 million, and we're figuring out how to do the balance of it, and talking to Hilton Head. I don't think there's any... I don't think there's any disagreement on their part that they ought to be part of it, but we still got to figure out what the, what the amount is. So anyway, Mr. Chairman, those are the items from Public Facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. The final item comes from me, to members of the audience, to my fellow council members here and online, and to everyone who is looking on, on television. Today, I'm creating an ad hoc committee. This committee is going to be tasked to provide recommendations to the full council for two specific groups. The first group is the over 1,300 employees who work in our 52 buildings across Beaufort County. The second group is the citizens of the county that interact with our employees on a daily basis. We know that COVID-19 and its variants have caused Beaufort County to react in a very, in a variety of ways, as we have dealt with the virus over the past 18 months. We continue to struggle with what we consider to be best practices that are needed to keep both employees and our citizens safe. We shut down the county at one point in time, thinking that may work. We passed a mask ordinance and renewed it three times, thinking that would work. We're still struggling to get a handle on COVID-19, especially this new variant. We're now faced with rising infections and pressure on our hospitals and our first responders to treat those who are infected, and trying to maintain our sanity. The ad hoc committee will be asked to address several issues and bring them to county council for recommendation in the near term, midterm, and long term. Some of those recommendations will be, what should be the requirements for employees who work in county buildings? What should be the requirements for anyone who has to deal with our employees in a county building? Can we and should we require masks for employees? Can we and should we require masks if you come to a public facility to interact with those? So in order to do this, I have formed an ad hoc committee consisting of county council members and talking with Mr. Greenway, liaisons from administration who are going to be assigned by the county administrator. Those individuals from the county are Mr. Larry McKellen, who's going to chair this committee, and he's going to represent those employees who work in buildings on Hilton Head Island. Council member Mark Lawson, he's going to be a member of the committee, and he will represent those buildings, those employees in the southern part of Beaufort County. And Alice Howard, who will be a member of the committee and represent those individuals who work in buildings north of the Broad. From the administration, Tom Kevney will, Deputy County Attorney, will provide legal advice. Scott Marshall, Human Services Director, will provide policy advice. And finally, Quandera Grant, who's the director of the Detention Center Director, will provide employee information and advice. Now, time is of the essence, so therefore, I'm asking Mr. McKellen to quickly, as soon as he can, to call this group together to begin the work with a full report to county council to be done at its regular council meeting of September 27th of this year. Notice that I am focusing on our employees. We're a very large employer that has the due diligence to protect our employees and the public they deal with. This is not saying that we are going to pass a mask mandate for the county. We are not telling businesses what to do. We are not telling individuals what they should do. We're going to deal with our employees because we have the due diligence to make sure this county is well-run, and that people who need to come to the county offices can feel safe, and the employees can feel safe. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak as well?
Yes.
Awesome. First, I just want to make it aware that I knew none of what was just about to be said about a group being formed. That was just expressed to me. I don't know if it was expressed to anybody else on council, but I just found out. So that's one. Two, at any time if that group tries to mandate or push anything on any of our employees, I hope that those employees stand up for themselves, for their own beliefs. We had a, genuinely have me fired up right now, Mr. Chairman, actually. We already tried to implement, implement something our employees once before without us knowing, and it came to us in an email, and then it was recited. And now this coalition was just built to possibly do other requirements. For those employees that they're talking about, the majority of those are Beaufort County school employees, including our teachers. So anytime we try to do that, I hope you would include the school board on that, which maybe you guys have already talked to some of them, I'm not sure. Anytime we try to impose any mask mandates or vaccinations for any of our employees, just know I hope Beaufort County is held responsible for anything that comes of that, as they should, as well as any other business that tries to force a vaccination on anyone. That should be a freedom of decision. Notice, I was not even aware of this or invited to this group whatsoever. That doesn't surprise me, considering I was the one to push to get the mask mandate removed to begin with. So I just want to throw that out there, that this was not made aware to all of us. Maybe I'm the only one, I don't know, I won't speak for everybody else. On another note, one of the best things about this job is being able to do the little things for the community that are important to others. For those of you that heard about the pier on Wimby Creek, just so you know, we are making a positive headway on that, a community, as a community outreach, really, to get handicap access for that. The final details hopefully are finished for that tomorrow. To be able to get that done, I just wanted to give you guys an update on that. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I, too, want to express the same sentiment that Mr. Cunningham, this, I find that this is my first time hearing this. However, I commend you for putting together this task force, and for this task force to move forward, to make some recommendation to this council, to this body, because I, I agree with what your statement, this is really a serious situation that we're in right now, so I commend you for doing that, even though I didn't know you were going to do that. Thank you, sir.
Well, sometimes you have to do things that...
It's okay.
Yeah.
It's for the good, in my opinion.
Well, you know, as chairman, I have the authority to create these committees, and I did. Any other comments? We are now at the consent agenda, therefore, I would like a member of council to make a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding items number four, 10, and 11. May I have that motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is made by Councilwoman Howard. Second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Mr. Rodman?
Now, Mr. Chairman, just two clarifications, which I don't think require any action, but on item number three, essentially, what we did at committee was to make that amendment to the recently passed FY22 budget. And I think that was the motion that came out of finance, so the wording on that should be, that's what we should use as we go to second reading. And very similarly, on item five, where we're redirecting some expenditures, that was to be an amendment of the ordinance that authorized those bonds monies that are being redirected. So I, I don't think that requires any action on our part, but I think when we come back for second reading, that should be the wording.
Any comment from our administration regarding what he said?
No, sir. We'll evaluate that and adjust accordingly.
Okay. Any further comments? The consent agenda will be approved without objections. Are there any objections? I see no objections, therefore, the consent agenda is approved. We are now at public hearings and action items, and the first one we're going to take up is item number four from the consent agenda. I would ask for a member of council for a motion to offer payment to retirees for loss of post-retirement health insurance benefits.
It's with pleasure that I move that item.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion. A second, please.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr.?
No, 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 no. Paul Figg was up first. Thank you.
Mr. Somerville will make the second. It has been duly motioned and seconded. Since Mr. Dawson has to, wishes to recuse himself from here, let's make a discussion, and then I will have a roll call vote. Any discussion from any members of council in chambers or online? I see no...
I just, I just echo what this motion is saying, that I think it's, it's the right thing to do, it's the moral thing to do, and for this council to, to live up to their commitment to these retirees. I trust that it's sufficient, but it may not be sufficient, but at least council has done something in that regard, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none? Mr. Rodman, you made the motion. You get to vote first.
Yes.
Mr. Somerville?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
He's recused himself, sir.
Yes. He has recused himself, so he's considered an abstention. Mr. Flueeling?
With great pleasure, sir, yes.
Mr. Glover?
I echo Brian's comments. Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Hervishan?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
With pleasure, yes.
Mr. McKellen?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
And Chairman enthusiastically says yes. The motion carries with 10 yes, no objections, and one recusal. Congratulations. We are now going to, there are no matters arising out of the caucus meeting. We will go to the two other items on the consent agenda that were removed. The first one is item number 10, so I will look for a motion for the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the documents necessary to convey a portion of property owned by Beaufort County known as the Okati River Park with TMS number R6210673.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'd ask, ask if someone's going to make a motion that they combine 10 and 11 because they're related, and they speak to the same issue.
We can certainly take 10 and 11 as a single motion. So does someone wish to make a motion for items 10 and 11?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Logan makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Rodman, Stu makes the second, so it's duly motioned and seconded. Discussion. Since Logan, you made the motion first, you can begin the discussion.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Rodman, you are the second.
Well, if I, if I understand this, there's, basically what we're doing is, we discovered that there was a small piece of land, that there was easement across for foot traffic, but not for vehicles, and so this would allow that easement for, for vehicles. And essentially, what it does is for somebody coming to the park, rather than going a very roundabout way through a commercial area and through Graves Road and back through some housing developments, they would go directly in on the road that comes in from the traffic signal. The other side of that is that there was, be some property that would go to the Crosby family, but it would have the easements on it so that it would be equally protected as it is today. So I think that's the gist of what these two are, assuming I understand it correctly, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Somerville?
Thank you, sir. It's a little more complicated than Mr. Rodman conveyed. I don't, not suggesting Mr. Rodman misrepresented, but it's a little more complicated than that. This, this matter speaks to, is part of a longstanding development project at Pepper Hall that was, a development agreement was finally agreed to a number of years ago. It was hotly contested, and it finally passed on a six-to-five vote. During the course of that development agreement discussion, and the result of the, the resulting development agreement was very generous to the developer, very generous. For example, the county paid $4.5 million for 18 acres adjacent as part of that property to create a park. And I think anybody, anybody, any sane person who looked at that realized that's an amenity for that project. Now, that's not a crime, but it is, it's a huge benefit to the developer to have an 18-acre park right on, on his, right adjacent to his property that's developed and paid for and maintained by the county. There are a number of other very generous concessions that were made in that development agreement. We allowed them to, I say we, they're allowed to put stormwater ponds on our 18 acres as opposed to on their, on their property. There's some of it's on their property, but a lot of it's on our property. We don't even know how much, because it keeps growing, and every, and every square inch of stormwater pond takes away from the park. And the stormwater comes off of the development, doesn't come off the park. There was, we allowed them to use part of the property for years for free. There's a barn, they were living in it. And then finally, we charged them a dollar a year. We paid for road construction. You know, this is the, this is the county that keeps on giving, and we just keep on giving. I guess you'll figure by now that I was opposed to this from day one. Nevertheless, the agreement was agreed to finally. And now, when you sell somebody property, you have to give them access to it. And suddenly, we find ourselves in a position where we don't have reasonable access. Now, we may or may not have some kind of windy road through the apartments and the townhouses and the whatever else is going to be put in there, but we don't have what I call reasonable access, and we thought we did. And so the proposed solution here is for us, the county, to give away a piece of the property that we paid $250,000 an acre for, along with another possible piece of property that we bought, that we thought we bought, and now we're not sure we bought it at all, has a dock on it because there's some question about the ownership, so we can get access to the property. So what I'm saying, the simple version of what I'm saying is, is we're, we're really taking this, taking this one in the shorts badly. So when this came before committee, we talked about a lot of things in executive session. And when I came out of executive session, I was confused, and I voted for this at council because I thought it was another matter that came out of executive session. So I was confused. No harm done, but I'm admitting that I made a mistake at the, at the Natural Resources Committee meeting. So I'm going to absolutely vote against this. Now I understand that there's still more questions unanswered about the property itself, the little piece of property that we bought, the little corner of it down there on the water that has a dock on it. There was some question after we paid $250,000 an acre for it, whether the owner, the developer actually owned it. And by the way, the developer is nobody's fool. He had a 31, 31-item disclaimer on the transaction. One of them said he's not, he's not guaranteeing the title to any of this. So, and it goes on and on and on and on. I mean, this is, this is a mess, to put it mildly. So I think under any circum, no matter what your personal view is on this, I don't think we should vote on it until at least we know what we're voting on. Are we voting to, are we, we're voting to give some of the property that we paid $250,000 an acre for to the, to the adjacent property owner, who happens to be the sister of the developer, so we can get access to a property that, that the developer should give us? It's my contention that the developer should give us access, reasonable access to the property, which he can easily do. And I don't have a map, and you're not looking at a map, but you have to take my word for it. When you come in there, you can, you can take a left and go in there, but we'd have to go across his property. And I think he should give us access across his property, not force us to buy property from, or... from, or give property to his sister so we can get access to the park. This is very difficult for anybody to understand. I spent two hours talking to lawyers about this, and my head was spinning when I left. And now I understand that there's, there's some additional information that's come to the surface. The attorney that I was speaking with, the staff attorney, is not here, apparently not prepared to talk about this, that's fine. But yes, I'm going to vote against it, and I really think we should put this thing, table this thing, and I'm going to make a motion to do that when I figure out how to do it procedurally, until we can at least understand exactly what the situation is, what we own, what we don't own, what the obligation of the, of the developer is to give us access to the property that he sold us for $4.5 million, instead of just raising our hand and saying, yeah, why don't we just give away part of it and take an easement so we can get into the property that we own? I could go on and on, but I think you kind of get the picture, that this is a mess. So, procedurally, may I make a motion to-
Hey, you want to postpone it?
At any time you can make a motion to amend-
I don't know procedurally, because there's been a motion, there's been a motion-
There is a motion in second to do the first reading, but you may make a motion to table.
I can do it while there's a motion on the table? That's a, that's a technical question, I don't really answer.
Yes, you can.
Okay. If I can make a motion-
Oh, if I could, I think you're asking, you wanted to get, do it until some information is done. That's really a postponement, not a tabling.
I think, I think you're right. I think you're right. Okay.
Paul, before you do that, could we allow all discussions before you go for the postponement?
You want to discuss it before I make my motion?
Preferably, if I could.
You make your postpone.
You can discuss the postpone. I think Mr. Rodman's correct. I think, I said table. I think the correct motion is postpone. So, I would like to make a motion to postpone this until our legal staff is comfortable giving us-
You're denying-
What?
Further discussion, because if you make the motion now, I have to call for a second on that, and then we discuss your motion to postpone, then we take a vote on your motion to postpone, which would-
Non-debatable, sir.
Yeah.
I thought the table was not-
Non-debatable.
I thought the table was non-debatable, but not to postpone.
No. Postpone, we take action on, which will cut any further debate.
Well, you, you want to-
I would like to say something.
Why don't I just hold off until everybody comments on making my motion? That's fine.
Yeah. I 100% understand Mr. Somerville's frustration. I wasn't here for this when this entire deal went down. I can tell you this, though. During the breakdown, it was $250,000 an acre. We are giving up about a tenth of an acre, so about $25,000 of our money we are giving back. With that being said, we are getting the parcel in the blue area. If you see it on that screen, it's in the bottom right. And with access to that parcel in the blue area in return, which I think is just shy of 3,000 square feet, it's not very big, but if we get that right away access to that, that gives us direct access for a road right into the park, where before we would have to go up and around to the right, which would be apartment complex. So, for people to get to the park, they would have to drive through an apartment complex, which to me is even more of a waste of $4 million, when most people don't want to drive through residential communities to get to some form of a park. The other thing about that as well is, if you look in the area between the yellow and the red, that's the area we're giving away, trading, however you want to look at it. We did not have plans to use that land anyways. We were planning on using it as a buffer. In the agreement with this as well, they are not allowed to build on that land anymore either. So that land will have to remain untouched. We also have plans to build our own pier in a different location, a better location, more centralized to the center of the park, so we weren't really planning to use that pier either. It is very frustrating, as Mr. Somerville said, but I do think it's a win for the community. Were there errors along the way? Yes. But I do think it's necessary for this project to move forward, to have direct access to the park for the citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Fluehling?
Thank you. Do we have title insurance?
I would assume so. Do we have title insurance?
Yes, we have title insurance.
Yes, we do. The answer to the question is, yes, we do.
Thank you. Clearly then, we have a claim against our title insurance for anything that, that is in dispute, that we're giving up in any access that we have to have to buy in order to acquire, in order to get to our property. So I really think that you need to call whatever title insurance company wrote that policy and start the procedure for making a claim. Because I'm not going to, I don't want to pay a dime out of our general fund for this.
I don't think there is money being exchanged, it's property being exchanged.
There's, there's no money being exchanged, and we have access to the, to the, to the property.
Right. But we're giving up the property that's labeled the Frenchlands, that has a value.
Yeah, we give enough property that has a value.
Yeah, we need to make a claim for the value of that property, whatever it is, doesn't matter what it is.
And I don't, I don't think there's, I mean, I don't think, we're not, we don't have to give up the property to get access to the park. We have access to the park. We're doing this in order to create more efficient access to the park. That's our proposal. We have access to the park property either through the building of the primary park access road that is further down Graves Road, or going through the upper end of Graves Road, right behind the commercial area, through the apartment complex, as Councilmember Logan says. So we have two places where we can access to park property. What we're proposing here gives folks more direct access through the commercial mixed-use area into the park without having to go through residential neighborhoods in order to get into the park, which I think, from a land use planning standpoint, is going to be problematic long-term. Because the public is not going to want to go through a residential neighborhood. We have a similar situation to this that occurs out on St. Helena with Harbor Island. There's a public beach access there, and a certain number of people get rejected from going through that gate once those parking spaces are full because of the way that agreement was set up. This agreement with doing the property switch, and I'm just making sure council understands everything, I'm not advocating one way or the other necessarily. The way this deal sets up is, we control the direct access into the park if we do this land swap, instead of having to go through other neighborhoods to get into our property.
Mr. Chairman? Ms. Howard?
I won't reiterate what Councilman Somerville said, and I agree with everything he said. I've always voted against this development agreement. I never, it never, I've been with it since early times and never agreed to the stormwater on the property that we paid for. I will vote against it, but I think a postponement might be the better choice, so I will support a postponement at this time.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes, and I actually, even though it's not on the table yet for a postponement, I would probably agree to that at this point. For one thing, it's not a property swap, it is a property swap for an easement across their property. I would think that the only way that I would agree to that is actually if we had deeded access and not just a, an easement. And I, as Mr. Fluehling said, I'd also like to find out where our property line is, because that seems to be in question of what we actually own as, as part of this agreement, of whether it is that yellow line or whether it is that red line that we saw up there. I think that has not been determined yet. So, those are my two things. So again, I would, I would also be in approval of a postponement if that was brought up.
Mr. Fluehling, again? Oh, I'm sorry, Brian, wait just-
I'll go after everybody else.
Yes, okay. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just say that, number one, I'm going to support the postponement. I think we just need better information, we need more information. Number one. Number two, this has been a comedy of errors from Jump Street, and at some point, we've got to put an end to it. It just feels like we keep getting asked for more and more and more and more and more. At some point, it's got to stop. It's not entirely clear to me if this park is going to be really that awesome that we need this road. People will drive through whatever to get there if it's really that awesome. And I think it's our job to make sure that it is, and I've got all the confidence in the world that we, that we will make sure that it's an awesome park. But to just keep giving and giving and giving, at some point, it's got to stop.
Any other comments before I go back to Brian?
Oh, I was going to make a comment before I make the motion, but go ahead, Brian.
Okay. Brian, go ahead first, and then Stu, and then we'll have-
We got York then.
Oh, then York, and then Paul will-
Let me real quick. I'm hoping that the county will be able to provide appraisals for both pieces of property, both the piece that we're giving up and, and the value of the easement that we intend to acquire. It's kind of important. And I'm going to vote for Paul's motion to postpone for some indefinite period of time, definite, indefinite, doesn't matter, simply because I'm looking for an opportunity to talk to Robert Graves again. That was a joke. Thank you very much.
Stu?
Yeah, a couple of things. Let's, let's keep in mind that I believe the administration has recommended this, and this is for the benefit of the party, of the county. This is not for the benefit of Mr. Graves. And I truly believe that, because we're going to get better access to a park that we want. Secondly, you know, I've been on council a long time, and we do a lot of things, and sometimes they're close votes, but whatever they've done, that's been the consensus of the body, and to go back and revisit and revisit and revisit, I think is, is out of keeping with the way that we should be and need to do business. Now, if we want to go back and revisit what we did, keep in mind, we bought the section along the river. We had an option to buy the entire thing, which we never exercised, so Mr. Graves proceeded with a development. And then, and I forgot who initiated it, but we essentially said, look, we have a piece of land that would be great to have as a passive park. We don't have a lot of passive parks in the southern part of the county. So the, and if we had just wanted to do a passive park and acquire the land to get to that park, we probably would have spent $6 or $8 million in doing it, and I, and I forget the amount that we're reimbursing Mr. Graves, but I think it's someplace in the $1 to $2 million range. So, you can set aside all the stuff that happened in the past, but there are two sides to every story, but I think once we voted on something, I don't know that we gain anything by going back over and over, but I do believe, maybe Eric can, can confirm this, but I believe this is for the benefit of the county, and it was recommended by staff.
I'm not, I'm not sure you all want me to answer the question in open session. So yes, to your point, Councilmember Rodman, it is for the benefit of the county. But, I'm going to caveat that with, the reason we're doing this is because, and I want to be careful with the way I say this, Mr. Graves and his attorney is uncooperative in doing anything else and looking into any other reasonable solution to give us direct access into that park without having to go through a residential neighborhood or an apartment complex. There is another option where none of this has to take place. He can do a wetlands crossing that he already has a permit for to give us direct access in that park, and all of this issue goes away, but he has refused to do that, as he has refused to cooperate with, with me on many things with regards to this development and this park. So I have to come up with the best solution, given the situation that I'm confronted with, and that's what I've tried to do here for the county and for the development and for the park. So I hope that's not offensive to anyone, I don't mean it to be, but those, that's the reality of the situation as I see it, so.
Okay. York?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me first commend the administration for coming up with a, a better access to this park. I do support that effort, because I've always had problems with access to this particular park, because, believe it or not, in, in the minds of a lot of people here, having people from my neighborhood to visit this park through that development area and stuff may probably be problematic for them, and so having this direct access give them a better access to this particular park. The problem I have with this and voting for it, and I can't not support it, because from, from day one, when I was on the Rural and Critical Land Board, I was against even purchasing the, the park. However, we were convinced to do so, to support it, we did, and it has gone downhill ever since. And the beneficial of everything that we have done has been Mr., the owner of this property, and that's why I can't support this effort at this time, because the owner continuously gets the best deal in this whole situation, and I have a problem. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Somerville?
Thank you, sir. I'll try to wrap this up so we can move on, we've got plenty of stuff to do tonight. In addition, I just think I need to mention that when this developer signed this development agreement, which gave him everything, the moon and the stars, he, he agreed to pay the school impact fees, now he's fighting us on that, he doesn't want to pay the school impact fees, which he signed an agreement that he said he would. That aside, nobody, I'm not suggesting that anybody wants to wind their way through apartments and condominiums and whatever else, whatever else he puts in there to get there. The point is, we shouldn't have to. The developer should give us access, and he can easily do that. And I'm, and the, and the comment about the way down the road easement, I don't think that's, I don't think we own, I don't think we can legally do that. I think there's a question about access on that far end. I mean, that's not what we're here talking about. The only access that we know about is a possible winding through the apartments. What I'm suggesting is, we shouldn't have to do that, and, and in order to solve that problem, it shouldn't be on the burden of the taxpayers. We shouldn't have to give back money to get access to the property that he sold us. He should give us the access. And that, and that's all I'm saying. And that's why I'm opposed to this proposal, because it makes the county provide access which he should provide. So, with that, my motion is that we postpone this until we can get a clear understanding from our legal department of all the issues associated with this particular proposal.
I'd like to second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to postpone this until we get certain pieces of information. In postponing, should we not set a timeframe, be it 30 or 60 days?
Yeah, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. I just don't know what's reasonable. What are you saying, 30 or 60?
Well, we'll ask-
What I would, what I would recommend that you do is ask staff to do the research, bring a report back to Natural Resources at the next committee so we can have freer discussion with this, and you all can decide if you're ready for council to take the matter back up at the first meeting in September. I think we can be ready in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And we do have three weeks until our next meeting, not the two-week cycle because of the fifth.
Okay.
That'd be reasonable.
All right. Everybody understands?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion about the amendment? Seeing no discussion, since you made the amendment, you go first, Mr. Somerville.
On the amendment, yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes, on the amendment.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Fluehling?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Hervishan?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Mr. McKellen?
Yes.
Mr. Rodman?
Yes.
Chair says yes, we are unanimous to postpone action on items number 10 and 11. That takes us to the real item number 10, third reading and public hearing of an ordinance for a zoning map amendment, rezoning request for 5.23 acres at 335 Joe Frazier Road from T2 Rural to T2 Rural Center. May I have a motion, please?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
There was a photo finish between me and-
Yes, Mr. Somerville made the motion, and Mr. Fluehling made the second.
Fair enough.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this agenda item?
I would just like to make a brief statement.
Please come forward, state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council. My name is Billy Player. I am co-owner of the property at 335 Joe Frazier Road. On behalf of myself and my brother Frank, we would, we would like to thank you for understanding and your supportive votes on- would like to thank you for understanding and your supportive votes on our first and second reading, and we would also ask for your continued support tonight on our petition on its third read. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we will...
There was a hand up back there. I don't know what the...
Are we in public comment again? We are not. This is an action item on this particular agenda item. Any other discussion? I see none. Mr. Somerville, you made the motion. You go first.
Yes.
Mr. Fluehling?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Glover? Mr. Hervishan?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Mr. McKellen?
Yes.
Mr. Rodman?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The tally is nine yes, two no. The motion pass.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion to extend, because will we go beyond the 8 o'clock hour?
Hopefully, we won't, but...
I think you're going to have some discussion.
Motion to extend, second, please.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Moved in second. Any objections to extending beyond the 8 o'clock witching hour?
I'm just going to do that just...
I knew you would. Okay. We are successful in a 10 to 1 vote. Okay. But maybe we'll get through this, and you won't be that Lone Ranger. Item number 11 is a First Reading of an Ordinance for a Text Amendment to Section 3.4.90 to the Community Development Code to Add a Coastal Resilience Overlay District to Require Real Estate Disclosure When Property Is Transferred in Zone X. Motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we do not...
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes.
Second. No second?
No second.
Mr. Glover? Discussion? You've heard members of the public talk about what they like and don't like about this. Mr. Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment. This is first reading, and there'll be plenty of opportunity to have additional discussion. I'm sure we'll hear from other folks as we go forward. There were some emails that were sent from members of the real estate community, and I know Ms. Steiger and Ms. Gresham are here, and I heard from Mr. Twisdale, and there were at least, there were seven specific questions that were raised, which are legitimate questions, fair questions, and I've spoken to or communicated with at least one of these folks and said that those deserve an answer. There was a, one of our staff members has done a written response to that. I think it went to Ms. Steiger. I don't know who else has seen it, but I think everyone who in the real estate community who's interested in that, particularly those seven questions, should have access to that and take a look at it, and you may disagree, you may want to respond further to it, but the initial seven questions have been addressed by our staff so far on first reading. So that's all I want to say.
Any other comments? Mr. Rodman?
I guess.
Oh, and then Mr. Cunningham.
Go ahead, Mr. Cunningham.
Oh, and then Mr. Fluehling. Go ahead.
First off, not sure how the real estate group got my personal number, but if you guys could use my county one, I would most definitely contact you guys back. It's 843-986-4772. That's my county phone. I'll be more than welcome to call you back on that. I won't call back on my personal. I think I had 34 phone calls from realtors, so that's the first thing. Secondly, it's not very often I get my mind changed during a public comment, but I do like the idea of the Realtors Association, as well as the Flood Association and different groups getting together to talk about different learning opportunities for this, whether my own personal beliefs on flooding, nonflooding, rising water, non-rising water is completely irrelevant to the fact that we are moving to the Low Country. You live here. It's literally in our name. So I'm actually going to oppose this. I supported it last time, but I do want to see, hopefully you guys maybe could pull together a group before the second or third reading and present some opportunities or present a group that's willing to get together and see if we can work something out between now and then. That'd be somewhere around seven weeks, six weeks, based on our schedule. I'd really like to see that. So, thank you.
Mr. Fluehling?
Thanks. You know, I have a couple of concerns with this proposal today. The first among them is its effect on the Northern Regional Plan and all the Southern Regional Plan as well, and the fact that the municipalities are not completely on board yet, I don't believe. And so that, again, puts the unincorporated area of Beaufort County at a disadvantage to market forces vis a vis the municipalities, especially when you consider the impact we just put in, and you heard one of my constituents talk about it earlier today, the negative impact. This will be just one more reason for people to move to Jasper County instead of Beaufort County. And I know a lot of people think that might not be such a bad idea, but I think we need to at least stay competitive in the market and, you know, in the market for providing housing opportunities for people. This will do nothing but raise the cost eventually of a price of a piece of property in Beaufort County. I think the long-term impact will be to stultify and stultify our local economy, and we need to avoid that at all possibilities. And, you know, the last thing is kind of a philosophical point for me, and that is that I don't believe the government should interfere between private contracts, between individual people. We need to butt out, let people mind their own business instead of the government trying to mind it for them. It's just not, it's just not our business. Let buyer beware. That is the motto when you're buying real estate, and we need to just butt out. Thank you.
Mr. Rodman?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I'm intrigued with the concept of an educational campaign, but for a broader reason, and it kind of goes like this. I think we lose a lot of people coming here because they're fearful of the hurricanes. And in reality, if you look at our probability of a hurricane, we're actually in a very low, we're probably in the lower quartile of the probability of actually having a hurricane, because if you think about it, you know, in the middle part of the season, they come up in the Gulf, and in the beginning and end of the season, they're always kind of swinging to the northeast, so they kind of hit Florida or they hit Cape Hatteras, but, you know, we do get the occasional one that comes in, like Hugo, but we really don't get very many. And I think actually to disclose to people the realities of the probability of having a hurricane may actually be something that would encourage people and help with property values, because I think people are actually, some people go away just because they're fearful of hurricanes. So that's something you might keep in mind if we do this educational campaign. Now, in terms of the particular ordinance, I'm not yet convinced. You know, I read what was put forward. I saw what Rob had a very reasoned response to that, but it seems to me that it looked to me like the document that came from the realtors was written by a lawyer, and I don't know that we've received a legal debriefing from our own attorneys as to whether we have a legal obligation to do this, and I think that would be good to do. And secondly, I think in our early discussion, one of the counterarguments was that this is a duplication of something that's in place, and so I've yet to hear the argument about whether this is a duplication of, that's available someplace else. And I agree with Brian. I think this is not necessarily the business of government at this point in time. So I'm not going to look for a postponement, but I do think there's still some issues to be answered.
Mr. Merchant?
Yes. Well, I thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to, you know, I guess be able to respond to some of the questions that you had. The first is that this ordinance basically corresponds with the very specific areas defined by FEMA, and that's that Zone X shaded, which is in the staff report. It is the area of the, basically between the 100 and 500-year floodplain. And the reason we chose this is that when property is transferred in the special flood hazard area, that's the Zone AE, that's where you're required to build up the base flood elevation plus freeboard, and that's also you're required to get FEMA flood insurance, that is something that's clearly conveyed when property is transferred. People know when they have to buy the FEMA flood insurance. But this particular area sits outside of that, and so we wanted to make sure that property owners were aware, or home buyers, that just because you're outside of the special flood hazard area, there still are risks, and that even though you're not required to get FEMA insurance, there is still flood insurance available in the private market. And so we felt that that was a valuable piece of information. There is some overlap with the state disclosure, but we believe that this actually provides more clarity. The state is basically a box to check, where this says specifically what the risks are, you know, what the location is. And the issue of redundancy, one of the things that we learned from FEMA is that they value redundancy in getting the message out, and so we do realize that there is some overlap in information, but, you know, as far as, they want to make sure that people are aware of the risks and they can act accordingly. I just wanted to address those that I think are in the staff report, but, you know, those are, you know, some of the rationale between why we're proposing this amendment to the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McKellen?
Yeah. Let me tell Mr. Somerville that I saw to the delivery of Mr. Merchant's answer to Mr. Twisdale, so yes, he does have that. Secondly, I've heard from realtors that this is unnecessary and redundant. I also heard that it's inconvenient for them to have to do this, and that it may be a detriment to purchase. I don't really take that view. I think that this might be beneficial to both parties because I think that the buyers will be fully informed, full disclosure, and since the seller is fully informing the buyer of risks that may prevent people from filing lawsuits against the seller for failing to disclose the possibility that there'll be a problem with the sale of the property. So considering all of those things, I don't see this as such a terrible thing to have imposed on the contract of sale.
Any further discussion? Mr. Hervishan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my view, this is duplicative, number one. Number two, anybody who's lived here for a period of time realizes that the Low Country can flood, and it will on occasion. It happens. Anybody who's moving here from somewhere else, moving to the Low Country, a coastal town on the East Coast where we do have hurricane season, I just can't imagine that that wouldn't be a consideration. It's going to come up in the insurance process, which is something that we heard in public comment. It's going to come up certainly in the due diligence process if somebody has due diligence on the property that they're trying to buy, the area they're trying to buy in. I just think that this is another layer of bureaucratic red tape that we just don't need, frankly. So for that reason, we don't oppose it.
Okay. Any further comments before we take action? Okay, seeing none, I will call the roll. Ms. Howard, you went first.
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
No.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Fluehling? Mr. Hervishan?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Mr. McKellen?
Yes.
Mr. Rodman?
No.
Mr. Somerville?
Yes.
We are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I vote yes for the first reading, which will allow us to have a greater dialogue with some of the items that came up to make an informed decision going forward. So we...
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, might I ask for the count again? Have that verified by the clerk? I got a different number than you did, sir.
Six yes, five no.
I have five, yes.
Verified.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 12, A Resolution to Express Beaufort County Council's Request that the South Carolina General Assembly Take the Necessary Actions to Continue to Allow Local Governments to Collect User Fees That Fund Critical Needs Such As a Public Safety and Infrastructure. May I have such a motion?
I'm moved. I'll second.
Chris, you were the motion, and York, you were the second. Everybody understands what's going on?
Unanimous consent, sir.
Yes, this will be done without objection. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections, the resolution is successful. We are now at our final citizen comments. Mr. Chris Attell, please come forward. Remen, sir. Go ahead.
Chairman, members of the county council, if an idea cannot stand in the arena of public debate, it does not deserve to stand, but at least you should be given a chance to get there. I have not been given that chance. I can accept the word yes as an answer. I can accept the word no as an answer, but I cannot accept silence as a non-answer. Mr. Chairman, I paid money to appear before the Planning Commission, and I paid money to appear before you, the county council. I don't think any of you would accept the notion that you would be told to waste your money, and that's exactly what's happening. I do a lot of gardening, and I do a lot of woodwork at my shop, but in gardening, everybody wants to spell, wants to fertilize the garden with their own mulch, N-U-L-C-H. But there's another mulch here, and that's a five-letter word, too, and it's spelled M-O-N-E-Y. The federal government has given Beaufort County a lot of money for the Bindon Plantation Development for the purpose of developing a conservation easement with a botanical garden or a environmental education center. That money was received by the county. Typically, when it comes to the county council, it goes to the treasurer, who notifies the county administrator, who perfects a resolution, and the resolution is voted yes and no. If any of the money is returned to the federal government, another resolution is adopted where the county council votes to return the money. A million and a half dollars, thereabouts, was received by Beaufort County, and I don't know where it went. I would say that if a resolution had been adopted by the county council, then credibility and transparency would have been achieved. This is not the case in this instance. I am completely and totally beside myself, understanding that why in the world has the Planning Commission made a recommendation and the Natural Resources Committee has not even heard it? That is unacceptable. I've never seen that, ever, and it's a violation of your own ordinance, the state law, and my personal rights as a citizen under the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution for due process and equal protection. I object.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further comments and no action further to come before county council, this meeting is adjourned at 8:04 PM. Thank you. Thank you.